Time being seven oh three, I call the city council meeting to order. The city administrator has determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the declaration of federal state and local emergencies pursuant to Minnesota statutes, chapter 12 and other laws. Further attendance and of the meeting by any member of the city council, city staff, or public at the regular meeting location in the city council chambers is not feasible due to the COVID-19 pandemic and closure of city hall to members of the public. As a result of the foregoing, the special city council meeting will be conducted solely by telephone or other electronics means as provided in the statute, Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero two one, and no in-person meeting will be conducted in the city council chambers. I think it is important to recognize that using a video conference is difficult than in-person meeting, but it is necessary. Under the circumstances, we are doing the best we can to maintain transparency and due process. I would appreciate everyone's patience and cooperations as we work through the meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Seeing that the meeting is being held remotely, when I call your name, please indicate your presence. Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Councilmember Fults.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Lund. And he is absent. And councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Okay, let the roll reflect that there is a quorum has been established with the absence at this time of councilmember Leifeld and councilmember Lund. Approval of minutes, councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the workshop or the regular meeting of May seventeenth? Seeing none, they are approved. Comments from the audience. For public comments, we have options for comments to be mailed prior to the meeting as well as an interactive feature during the meeting. For the email comments, they have been forwarded to the city council and the receipt is acknowledged. Please recognize that items not on the agenda will not be discussed this evening. We ask the attendees and the audience to raise, use the raised hand feature and they will be invited to speak one at a time. I also want to remind everyone that the public comment period is not intended for an extended dialogue. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council at this time? Is there anyone in, yes, and I do see a raised hand. Ms. Tukata, three. And John, could you bring her in, please, or them in? Welcome. There you are, welcome. If you want to unmute, you are able to speak. You can't unmute? Okay. Any assistance, John, or?
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know if I can offer any assistance on this one here, sorry.
Okay. You want to go out and try to come back in? Must be your internet.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like she's frozen at the moment here, so perhaps that she could come in, asked, asked to come in at a different moment, but screen's frozen up at this point.
All right, and I see we have Corey Colvin with us. Corey, if you can unmute. She was with us. Again, asking for raised hands in the audience to speak at this time.
Hi, are you able to hear me now?
Uh, yes. And now, no. Corey?
Um. If I turn my video camera.
Yes?
Yes. Um. I will try to speak. I guess my connection is not that fantastic right now. Um, but good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name's Corey Colvin. I'm present here once again to speak in favor of amending our current ordinance regarding the keeping of chickens on residential lots and ask that you vote in agreement to approve this change. We, the residents of Hastings, ask to be allowed a small flock of four to six hens without unnecessary restrictions or permits. Urgency from city council and the planning commission staff is requested as individuals who wish to have chickens would need to get their chicks by the end of June to have winter hardy flocks. Last time I was here, I informed you all the numerous benefits that backyard foul presents, benefits such as insect and weed control without the use of harsh chemicals that are toxic to our native wildlife and are already declining pollinator populations. They provide nutrient-rich fertilizer, fresh eggs that are more nutritious than store-bought eggs, disposal of food scraps, and overall, a perfect way to reduce our carbon footprint and maintain a self-sufficient, sustainable, organic, and ethical lifestyle. Since May seventeenth, our petition has grown further and there is now a toll of two hundred and thirty signatures from Hastings residents. Many of those who signed are present at today's meeting to show their support of this necessary change, a change that will bring Hastings into the present era of supporting a self-sustainable community. I've heard from residents in the city about ongoing concerns of allowing chickens and have further researched the concerns about potential noise complaints and the potential increase in demand for police ball. And on those and chicken-related reports. Honestly speaking, however, serving them. I have in our community and believe that while countless cities are able to have non-issue ordinances regarding chickens, we can too. Hastings and Apple Valley are the remaining cities within Dakota County with over twenty thousand residents to not allow chickens. In September of two thousand twenty, Apple Valley received a petition of hundred signatures and is currently in the process of reviewing and when this goes through, Hastings will be the only city left to not allow them. I direct the city council and planning commission to reach out to Alex Sharp, part of Apple Valley's community development and planning division, who offered to be a source of information and already completed research. Upon request, I can email his contact details to you. Further information I'd like to provide comes from other cities. Jim Sheedon in Eden Prairie states they've had chickens since two thousand, see dog complaints here. Joe Lessie from Shakopee states that since two thousand seventeen, they've only had a total of seven chicken complaints and over a thousand other animal-related calls. Wendy Ferguson in Blaine states they received chicken, or zero chicken complaints since two thousand sixteen and over twenty-five hundred other animal-related phone calls. Cody Op said from Eagan states they've received no chicken complaint, complaint since allowing them in the city and stated that they have had a successful experience with chickens that has brought their neighbors together. These numbers should be enough to reassure our city council that allowing chickens should pose our wonderful city no risk and little to no issue. There should be little to no increase in demand or effort from our police force. When a potential chicken owner does the proper research, they will be able to successfully house a small flock of hens on their property with no issue of noise or odor. I'd also like to add that Abby Schuf, an extension educator, part of the poultry extension at the University of Minnesota is attending tonight's meeting. She is offered to be a point of contact for the council members and is willing to answer questions that may arise during or after the meeting. On a final note, I'd like to once more request that the topic be addressed with urgency. A previous draft of this ordinance already exists and there are numerous individuals in other cities that can provide more details and data that will be beneficial to the creation of our own ordinance. Noda Heights, for example, has a wonderful and well-thought-out ordinance that Hastings could look to adopt. I would like to see this change occur by the end of the month for the allowance for individuals to obtain their chicks now without retaliation. Thank you for your time and I hope you'll consider this amendment in a favorable manner.
Thank you, Corey. As you know, we will be talking about this later in the agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands in the audience? Seeing none, council, we will move on. Are there any council items to be considered? Okay. Um. Council, is there a, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Fults.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
With a councilmember Leifeld as a second. Any discussion, council? Clerk Mercha, please call the roll.
Member Brock.
Yes.
Councilmember, councilmember Fults.
Yes.
Councilmember Fox.
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund. That's him. Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
And Mayor Fessender.
Yes. And the consent agenda prevails that motion. Tonight, we have a presentation approval of the two thousand twenty comprehensive financial report for this item. We will have a presentation by our independent financial auditors at Bergen KDV. Welcome, Caroline.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Happy to be here with you tonight. I do have the results of the audit to go over with you. Does it work for me to just share my screen to go through the PowerPoint? Okay.
Sure.
Just wanted to make sure. Everyone see that, okay? Yep, okay, perfect. The main reason that you ask us to work with you is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. That opinion is housed within the independent auditor's report. Also, within the independent auditor's report, both management's responsibility and our responsibility is outlined. Management's responsibility is for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with GAAP. Our responsibility is to provide an opinion based on the audit we conducted. So really what that's getting at is that a line is drawn in the sand. We are not able to determine the numbers and audit them. So management determines the numbers, we conduct our audit on them. The opinion we're providing is what's called an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level that we can provide, meaning that we believe the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. In addition to just looking at the numbers as we go throughout our process, we also consider internal controls, conducting our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. You see a couple of items listed below. That first bullet there indicating we did have a couple of internal control items that were noted during the audit. Both are items that were noted in the previous year. But I will tell you, there are a couple that were removed. So we were pleased to see progress in a couple of areas that that we noted in the past. And also, lack of segregation of accounting duties is a very, very common item for cities of your size. So I would say probably ninety-nine percent of the entities that we work with have some sort of lack of segregation of accounting duties present, very, very common. And the other item in regards to audit adjustments, those do occur. And the only requirement is that when they are above a certain threshold, we are required to communicate that to you. So that's all that this one is getting at. We've seen improvement there as well over the course of the last few years that we've worked with the city. In addition to the last couple of items that I touched on, we also had a new component this year, which was a single audit in accordance with OMB Uniform Guidance. Because the city spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures, the single audit was required. The test or the program that we tested was the CARES funding. There were no findings in relation to any of the all of the items that we needed to test and look into in regards to that. One final component of the audit before we dig into the numbers is in regards to Minnesota legal compliance. The Minnesota Office of the State Auditor puts together seven various, seven checklists full of state statutes for the categories that are identified here. So we ask a number of questions of of your staff in regards to that. There were no findings in relation to any of those items either. So with that, we'll jump into the results for the year. This first chart here looks at general fund, fund balance. And it's broken out by the various components. So there's a category there for non-spendable that is in, or that relates to items for inventory or prepaid, where those dollars have already left the building. You cannot use that component for future spending. It's already been spent. You're holding it at this point. There's a restricted component that is earmarked for specific purposes. And then that leaves the unassigned category, which is available for future operations. Fund balance in total ended the year at eight point three million. And as we see that unassigned is just under eight million. That unassigned fund balance is what you have created a measure around as far as your fund balance policy goes or for your goal. And you've indicated in the fund balance policy that you would strive or have a goal for that unassigned fund balance to be in a range of thirty-five to forty-five percent of the next year's budget. Budgeted expenditures. If we run that calculation for two thousand and twenty, the percentage is fifty-one point eight. So you are slightly above that range at the end of two thousand and twenty. Here we have a chart that provides you detail on general fund revenues. Property taxes increased. There was an increase in the levy as well as additional reporting in regards to an interfund loan involving TIFF District Seven, so some catch-up in regards to getting that recorded. Licenses and permits decreased as a result of collecting, not collecting liquor license revenue in two thousand and twenty due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Intergovernmental revenue increased. As we touched on already, there was the CARES funding that was received this year. And then charges for services increased. There was increased in-house engineering revenue in two thousand and twenty. Similar presentation for your general fund expenditures on this chart. In total, expenditures increased about two hundred and seventy thousand. Public safety increased. There was an increase in step-in lane increases and then also an increase in hours worked. General government increased. That had to do with not having a city administrator for a portion of two thousand and nineteen, as well as some increased repairs and maintenance expenditures in two thousand and twenty. And then capital outlay decreased. There was, there were fewer mail and overlay costs. Public works decreased. That's a result of fewer fuel and chemical purchases in two thousand and twenty. We have a more of a high-level view of the general fund and a budget-to-actual perspective. So this first column is the final budget that was approved, calling for a decrease in fund balance, about one hundred and thirty-one thousand. Actual results are in the middle column here, showing the increase in fund balance. And the far right column is the variance. So if we go all the way back up to total revenues, just to look at some of the reasons for the change that you're seeing here. Total revenues were over budget. We apply a percentage to that at seventeen point two percent. Your largest category being intergovernmental revenues, again as a result of the CARES funding that was received. If we look at total expenditures as well over in that variance column, see that expenditures are under budget. If we apply a percentage to that, it's one point nine percent. Public works and general government, both under budget as a result of budgeting conservatively. And then you see that capital outlay is slightly over budget. That just had to do with not including the prior carryover amount in the current year budget. Next, we move on to the fire and ambulance special revenue fund. Both revenues and expenditures are down in this fund as a result of fewer calls in two thousand and twenty. The result of that activity was that fund balance did increase for the year and ended just under one point five million. Similar presentation for your parks and recreation special revenue fund. Total revenues increased here with an increase in the levy allocation. And total expenditures were down. There were repair costs in two thousand and nineteen related to the damaged soccer field. And the results of that activity was that fund balance ended the year at one, just under one point four million. Then we switch gears a bit to your enterprise funds. And we begin with your water fund. Operating revenues increased here about eight percent. There was an increase in usage. And then expenses decreased about eleven percent. This had to do with the fluctuation in pension expense. There's an actuarial report that is involved in calculating that liability and the assumptions and different things come into play there that change from year to year in their calculation. And so this year, that led to the decrease that we're seeing with this, the fluctuation in pension. Couple of different ways that you can look at enterprise funds as far as health goes. There's operating income and loss. Obviously, we see that here with the brown bar. That includes depreciation. We include an additional column or bar here, I should say, for the orange bar, which factors out depreciation expense. And you'll see that for four of the five years, both bars are above the line for you. And we use that as a means to analyze if the operating revenues that you are charging are sufficient to cover operating, all of your operating costs, including depreciation expense. And as you'll see, there are times when those operating revenues don't fully cover depreciation expense. But as you see for the past four years, in this case, you are fully covering depreciation expense with the operating revenues you're charging. And what that does is allow you to set some dollars aside for future replacement of those assets. An additional way, this slide's a little longer and then I just kind of give the numbers after that. But an additional way to look at the health of an enterprise fund is the unrestricted net position. This is the equity portion, if you were to think of it that way, that is available for future operations. We look at the unrestricted component because there's a component of your net position that is tied up in the capital assets of the fund. That would not be available for future spending. It's already been spent on the assets. So that's why we looked at unrestricted net position, that that amount or that balance for the water fund increased two hundred and fifty thousand for the year and cash was up two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So positive results for this fund. Similar presentation for the sewer fund. Operating revenues were down slightly, about one percent. Expenses increased point one percent. So very, very consistent operations for the sewer fund for the year. Again, seeing both the brown and orange bars above the line, indicating you're fully covering depreciation expense to set dollars aside for those future capital assets. That unrestricted net position component I touched on increased six hundred and thirty thousand and cash was up five hundred and sixty thousand. So again, positive results all around here. Similar presentation for your stormwater fund. Revenues increased here with an increase in rates. Operating expenses were down. Again, has to do with the fluctuation in pension, as I mentioned earlier. And then also there were fewer repairs and maintenance costs in two thousand and twenty. Again, seeing brown or gray, I guess that is, and orange bars above the line, indicating you're fully covering depreciation expense. Unrestricted net position and cash both increased here as well. One more enterprise fund to cover, which is the hydro fund. Operating revenues were down. There were turbine breakdowns throughout the year that led to that. And then the repairs related to those breakdowns led to increases in the, on the expenditure or expense side of things as well. So in this case, because of the revenue situation and those additional costs related to expenditures, both the gray and the orange bars are below the line, indicating those operating revenues were not sufficient to cover operating expenses. That unrestricted net position and cash components that we talked about, both of those decreased for this fund as well. The last couple of slides that I have for you look at the tax levies, the tax capacity, or excuse me, the levy tax capacity and the tax capacity rate. So I start on this page here. Net tax capacity, which is the green, increased by six point nine percent. The levy increased by three point nine percent. So as a result of that tax capacity increasing at a greater rate than the levy, tax capacity rate decreased. So that's what I'm prepared to go through with you. I'd be happy to take any questions anyone might have or look at something further.
Thank you, Caroline. Council, any discussion? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. And this might be a question for Chris. On the hydro fund, in years past, when we were on the positive side, did we transfer those dollars to the general fund at that time? And have we changed our policy that all funds, if we do make a positive on the hydro fund, stay in the hydro fund? And not to replace the deficit like example like what we'd have today?
Uh, councilmember Vaughn, if I caught everything there, in past years, we weren't making the transfers when times were good. This year, we did reverse those and in an effort to try to help out the hydro plant. So we we make those quarterly throughout the year just to keep things from getting out of hand near year-end. But then when we got to the end of the year, we did in fact reverse out those transfers. So it would have been worse had we not done that. So yeah, that, our thoughts always have been that if you can make it with, in the general fund without those transfers, we're happy to do so to help the hydro fund hopefully through a shorter term, rough patch. Is there anything I didn't answer there? I'm sorry if I did.
Nope, I think I got it. It sounds like we're moving money back and forth, where I was just curious if we just wait till it's all done and then see. And then from year to year, if there's a positive cash flow, we just leave it in that fund so we're not transferring it back and forth. I just didn't know if we're doing that going forward.
Uh, yeah, no, as far as the transfers, we're just following, you know, prior practice that just, it's it's easier to maybe reverse out two or three as opposed to having a whole slug of them at year-end. I mean, that's just the way it's been done. So we're just kind of maintaining that. We can certainly hold off on that if that were the desire of the council, I guess. Yeah, so far, we've made one transfer right now from hydro to the general fund that should it be another rough year, we were prepared to back that out again.
Thanks, Your Honor. I just think that we should keep an eye on it, maybe talk about it with your finance committee, that should that fund be true, meaning that's not transfer back and forth. Let's just see how well the hydro fund does. And if we need to make investments in it, we have a dedicated funding source for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Vaughn. Any other questions, council? If not, I would accept a motion to accept the two thousand twenty comprehensive financial report.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Brock and a second by councilmember Fults. Additional new discussion, council? Clerk Mercha, please call, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Councilmember Fults.
Yes.
Councilmember Fox.
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender?
Yes. And that motion prevails. Tonight, we have a public hearing with special assessments for 2020 infrastructure improvements. And for this item, we have an introduction by city engineer Ryan Stemsky. Welcome, Ryan, and a potential action by city council.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know who's got, is it John that can give me controls to share a screen?
Yes.
All right, can we all see that? Great. Yeah, so tonight, this item, we are talking about the 2020 neighborhood infrastructure improvements. And it is the assessment hearing. It's a little out of order. I should raise a little red flag to us. Typically, we are assessing in the year we're completing projects. But as we all know, we had the COVID-19 pandemic last year. And so with council direction, we defer these assessment hearings to a later date. And so that's why we're here tonight is we're talking about a project we already completed. And now we're moving on to the assessment hearing portion of the 2020 project. So just to refresh our memories, this project had two areas. One area, one was 15th Street. That was from Pine Street over to Tyler. As you all know, we're doing the second phase of that this year. But we're talking about area one from Pine to Tyler. And then also area two was what we call the Cannon Street area. It also included the streets 22nd through 25th. So these, these project funding pie charts here are totals. The total project cost for this project was a little over $4.1 million. Bonded debt for the project was about 1.4 million. We had 750,000 from our state aid account. The assessments we're discussing tonight are proposed at total for both areas at 769,000. The wastewater account was about 445,000 with the water account nearly 727,000 for the 2020 project. So kind of jumping right into that assessment portion of the pie chart. To start out, I'd like to talk about how we come up with our assessment rates. And we do hire an independent firm to prepare an appraisal report for the project area in question. So that firm does value the land before and after the proposed street improvements. The difference between these two values leaves us with that special benefit attributed to those properties that front the project. In 2020, we did hire Hosh appraisal and consulting. So for area one, the policy diving into that a little bit further. 15th Street, as we've discussed in the past, is a collector and a municipal state aid street in our city. So our ordinance does give us the direction that 25% of those projects, street and storm sewer costs, we look at that for an assessment. But we also have our appraiser look at the context of the area and provide us a supported opinion of special benefit. We look at those two numbers and we try to keep that number low for the residents. But we need to make sure we generate enough assessment revenue to do our geo revenue bonds. So it's kind of a balance there. But on this project, we were able to use the benefits supported by the appraiser and, and come up with the values you see here below. So these were recommended by Hosh and also by our operations committee for area one. And that is for all our residential properties along 15th Street. It was $54.64 per foot for this region of 15th Street. And then for the commercial properties, that rate was $78.18 per foot. Moving on to area two, area two is a little bit different. It's all local streets or neighborhood streets. We did look at our project that we completed in 2019 when we were determining the rates. The 2019 project was obviously in the same geographic region. It had the same street improvements. And so therefore, we tested out the same assessment rates for the 2020 project. We had Hosh look at this in detail for the context of the neighborhoods we were assessing. And then also ran through our recommendations through the operations committee. Both were supported at the following rates, which were also the rates in 2019. And that's $56.70 a foot for single family and apartment properties. And then $66.60 per foot for the twin home properties. So a little bit further on our assessment policy of note, we do look at irregular shaped lots. Lots that maybe are the same area, for example, same type of home, but they just have an extreme on frontage. So it's not fair to rack up that frontage charge. We normalize those lots or we look at those lots in context to the surrounding lots and give them a fair front footage and don't penalize them for having an odd shaped lot, for example. So that's one thing we do in the assessment policy. We also look at corner lots in a special way. We try to give them somewhat of a break. If folks get assessments on or improvements on both sides of their lot, we multiply their short side by the full length. But the long side, we take actually a 25% of that length and apply it towards the assessment rate. So they're getting a little bit of a savings on that side. Moving on and how we pay for assessments for the residents that are listening online or will be reviewing this presentation. We do, now this follows the same schedule as we just covered recently with our 2021 assessment policy. We're just bringing the 2020 assessment project or assessments forward. But we do accept payments beginning October 1st. Statements will come out in the mail. They'll be very clear to all the property owners again. So don't have to memorize this. But also, please note, we do accept partial payments. So it doesn't have to be in full. But any amounts that do remain on each assessment after November 30th, those are certified to the Dakota County Property Taxes with a $50, $50 processing fee. Conversely, if there, there are no interest or fees, if you pay your assessment amount in full by that November 30th date, if you do nothing and let the assessments roll into property taxes, it goes through a 10-year payoff, which will be noted on your property set tax statement. That doesn't begin until spring of 2022. So I'm still a little bit timed before these would hit the property tax statement. The interest rate for that 10-year financing period is between 3% and 5%. We've said typically, and we have seen typically in grades in mid threes in recent years. So let's just run through an example quick for a lot. I think this is an area two. I grabbed a 90-foot standard lots. Let's just improvements in front of the home and 90 feet of front footage. Using the assessment rate of $56.70 per front foot, we multiply the rate times the footage. That gets us to this $5,103 for your total assessment amount. If we did nothing with that amount, we let it roll to our county property taxes. We take the $5,103 to buy that over those 10 years of financing to get about $510 annually. And we need to add in the interest at 3.5% was our example. Looking at the remaining balance in the first year, that, that would equate to about $179 in that first year. And keep in mind, it obviously would, your principal would decrease every year thereafter. But looking at it at that first year, it would be a total annual installment of about $690. So break, I like to break that down monthly because many of us escrow in our monthly mortgages. And so that'd be about $58 per month that you'd see line item on your escrow amount if you use a mortgage company. Furthermore, we like to note very clearly that there is assessment abatements or financial aid for these assessments. We set the projects up that way so that they can receive these federal funds. The fund source is the Community Development Block Grant Program or CDBG, you might hear it as. And again, that's federal government funds. These funds really do depend on income qualifications. And so the city will compile that information and mail that out again to all property owners on the assessment role. This typically occurs late summer of this year. Those applications will be clear instructions there to be returned to the Dakota County Development Agency or CDA. They will do the review, not the City of Hastings. The qualifications again are determined by the CDA. We do have full and partial abatement. If you do qualify, full abatement is possibly available on those folks that do fully qualify. And then some folks may partially qualify. And for funds available after those full abatements, that would be another source of abatement or financial aid. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I will first stand for any questions the council may have. And then I will let the mayor conduct the hearing and eventually consider the resolution to adopt the special assessments.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Counsel, any questions for Ryan at this time? Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ryan, great presentation. And again, every time you talk, I learn a little bit more about something I never thought I'd know anything about. I did have a resident that I ran into recently ask some questions just about impacts with COVID. I know there's some options out there. Is there anything, have we looked into anything along that lines? I know they had just mentioned, you know, it's been obviously rough for a lot of different people. Is, is that something we can look into or have we looked into any sort of assistance or along with anything along the COVID lines?
I would say.
If you go back a couple of screens, I know you talked about the abatement. Yeah, yeah, awesome. So the abatement one right there gives us some great ideas. I could take a screenshot of that so I can share it with this particular individual. But what are your thoughts?
Right, you know, I think for, for our department in engineering, basically the one, you know, delaying this one full year to get out of the middle of the pandemic was the direction of the council. So and then as you can see, it doesn't hit your tax statement till 2022. So I think pushing everything back was kind of the key. And then secondly, right, we still have checked and ensured that the CDBG funds are available for this abatement program. I really, that I've had a lot of those calls too from residents, but this is the source that I've been giving those folks. So if you would, you know, share this screenshot. I haven't heard of anything additional to my knowledge. So this is kind of what I've been feeding to residents that have had those same concerns.
Awesome, thanks, Ryan. I'll do the same.
Thank you.
Additional question, Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ryan, real quick on the CDBG funds, since we didn't do this last year, do those funds roll over this year? Or will the assessments from last year and this year all be going after the same amount of funds that we have allocated?
So great question, Councilmember Vaughn. Yes, John Hensman kind of helps us with the CDBG fund and checks in on that from time to time. Those funds, as I understand it, did roll over and compounded. So it looks like our public works director has a few more comments on that.
Is that, is that an invitation to speak, Ryan?
It is.
You're, you're correct, yeah. The city actually applies or makes requests for funding to that program each year, council members. So we had an allotment granted to us in 2020. And we also have an allotment granted to us in 2021 for the same purpose. So it's continuously applied for every year by the city. And we're happy to put those resources into action as people apply for this program.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Leifeld, your hand is still raised. Okay, just checking. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, seeing none at this point, I will open the public hearing.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
It, for folks that do wish to speak, if we could make sure to get their name and address prior to them speaking, just a reminder.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Anyone at this point wish to speak on the infrastructure assessments for 2020? Any raised hands? I see none. One more time, I'll call for any one speaking to wish to speak to the assessments for 2020 infrastructure project. I see none. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And any other additional discussion by counsel? If not, I would look for a resolution to adopt the assessments for projects 2020, 2021 neighborhood infrastructure improvements.
Removed.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Okay.
And Councilmember Brock? New discussion, counsel? Clerk Murcho, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Fulch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender?
Yes. And that motion prevails. Ryan and Nick, thank you for assistance. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the Parklet License Board. Thompson Ziegler Fireside Pizza DBA Doing Business As Fireside Social House, 106 to 108 Second Street East. For this item, we will have an introductory, introductory by Community Development Director, John Hensman. And welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. As the mayor pointed out, we do have a public hearing tonight to consider a parklet and liquor license amendment for the fireside social house. I'm going to share my screen to show a little bit more information on the request. We're looking at here is Second Street, a 16 by 20-foot parklet, which would be located within these parking spaces near the bump off. This is the frontage road by Vermillion Street and the fireside social house here. As you may recall from other parklet proposals we've looked at, we do hold a public hearing to consider the proposal. And we have done a review by staff. On our staff review, we have noted that the hours of the park that would be limited to 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. This is slightly different than what the applicants have proposed at a later time, a little shorter time than what they were looking for, but consistent with other parklet operations. Other than that, pretty standard comments that we had received on this one. Pertaining to the public hearing, we have provided notification to people within 350 feet of the facility. I have not received any comments for or against the proposal. So we are recommending approval of the document today. This is a public hearing. You may hold it at this time or I could stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this, please raise your hand. Again, calling for anyone to speak to the public hearing for the parklet for fireside. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And counsel, any discussion? Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, is this in addition to their sidewalk licensing cafe or will that not be present?
A council member, they did make a request for a sidewalk cafe license and then withdrew the request. So this would only be a parklet.
Okay. And we don't have any, since we've worked out all of the logistics to the parklets and the walk through on the sidewalk, we don't have any concerns there, right?
Correct, council member. No, no concerns with the location.
Thanks, John, appreciate it.
No additional discussion, then counsel, I would look for a motion.
Your Honor, make a motion to so approve.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Second?
A second.
Councilmember Fulch? Additional new discussion, counsel? Clerk Henderson, please call. Clerk Henderson, please call the roll. Sorry, Clerk Mercha, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Councilmember Folch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Lico?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fessender?
Yes. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under Public Works, we already went through the resolution to adopt a special assessment for 2020 under Parks and Recs. Tonight, we have a resolution establishing a diseased tree hardship relief program. And Dan Watich, a welcome, and he will give us an update on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Seems we had lengthy discussion on this a couple of weeks ago at our last council meeting. I'll hit the highlights tonight. Our existing longstanding ordinance has the responsibility of boulevard trees being on the adjacent property owner. But recognizing the extent of Emerald Dash or starting to become evident, particularly evident this year and expecting coming years, had discussion about a hardship relief program. So at our meeting on May 17th, the council voted directed to have this resolution drawn up to formalize it. And the resolution reflects those that vote. It has two criteria for if a property owner would be eligible for the hardship relief. One being that they meet an income threshold of 80% or less of the average median income. That's consistent with the CDBG funds that you just discussed with the the street assessments. The other piece was regardless of income, if somebody has four trees on their property that might need to be removed due to Emerald Dash or or other disease, that just recognizing the number on one property also would be the threshold that would make somebody eligible. The way the hard, the relief hardship relief itself would work is a 60-40 cost share. So the property owner pays 60%, the city pays 40%, which again is consistent with some other policies we have if they have been treating the tree, but it had still died. That cost share is kept at $2,000. The other ma- major option with the hardship relief is that it can be spread over a number of years, similar to the assessments we just talked about. Also very similar to when we have sewer water service line repairs for a private property that we undergo. And they signed some waivers that we can spread it over a number of years, which depending on the the dollar amount is most likely five years, potentially up to 10 years. Couple other things I do want to note. One, we have negotiated competitive pricing. So although a property owner might get notified, this tree is diseased and you're responsible for taking it down, that they could shop around the best price they're going to get. I it is most likely going to be working through the city. But really the matter of passing that cost savings on to those property owners. The other piece in this particular year, can't speak about the future and can't even promise for this year, but there's some good indications that the new replacement trees that would be required to be planted afterwards may be covered by a grant. So real thankful for an additional way to pass on cost savings to property owners. We're anticipating about 49 trees needing to be cut down this year. Total cost removal about 28, almost $29,000, stump removal, another $7,000. The replacement trees, planting new ones, almost $31,000. So if that's covered by a grant, that almost cuts the entire piece in half. So but in total, we're looking at about $66,000 worth of tree replacement this year. And as council discussed last meeting, approved a budget amendment of $20,000 to go towards the hardship relief program. So certainly think this is something that would help out a number of our residents. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Any discussion, council? Councilmember Folch.
Thank you, Dan, for the overview. When this particular matter went before two of the council committees, it went before the it was the Parks Committee and then secondly, it went into the Finance Committee. And in both situations, we discussed, you know, our hard, our hardship relief options. And one of the ones that was included at the time, which isn't right now, and we discussed this at the last meeting, but just to remind everybody, for those of you that weren't on those committee meetings, there was this, there was a piece that staff were recommended, recommending. And and it was a part of the recommendation that both of those committees approved moving forward. But when the council heard this topic last time, Dan said that they they, they weren't recommending it. And what it was, just to read it for for you all, so that you can know what it was that was in the committee packet, it was a deferred assessment where costs for removal of tree stump, for tree stump and replacement of the tree would be deferred until some triggering event, like the sale of the property. Minnesota state law allows for deferrals only for seniors over 65, retired due to total disability and reserve guard troops called in active duty. In all three cases, the person must also demonstrate that the assessment is a financial hardship. And so that was something I that, you know, the council members who are a part of those discussions were were appreciative and and we had approved. But in the last meeting, Dan had said that they took that out as a part of the recommendation of the hardship package because the city didn't have a deferral assessment policy that had been adopted. And so we just kind of let let it go this last council meeting. But I just want to bring that back up again because I think that if the state legislature has given us a tool, you know, for in our toolkit, you know, to help residents that have, you know, that are that elderly, you know, retired due to disability or they're a reserve guard troop, you know, in active duty. I think that, you know, that that's something that we should be considering. And although I'm not going to ask for it to be a part of the the recommendation right now, I would like to ask if that could be, if that could go to the Finance Committee for, you know, further consideration. When you look at, you know, recommendations about homelessness and and, you know, like the the leading thing that you can do is help people to stay in their existing home. And so I think that if this is something that we could be doing that could possibly help, you know, the elderly, disabled in our troops stay in their homes. Perhaps we should be examining that and take in. And so not knowing that all the ins and outs are right now about that, but just, I'd like to, I I'm not sure if this is the right time to do it, but just, I'm not sure if I just ask or if I make a formal recommendation for that particular issue for the deferral assessment policies, if that could go to committee discussion sometime in the future for consideration. And then that could also be used in our property for just like as as we were discussing for the for the street improvement projects that that could be used for special assessments too.
Councilmember Folch. The additional, Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I just want to comment to Councilmember Folch's commitment to this. And and thank you for hanging on to this and continuing to have this conversation. Because I think it's really easy for a lot of us sitting here to think that this doesn't seem like a really big deal, but these costs can be catastrophic to an awful lot of people. You know, these costs can be the difference between someone losing their home, losing their car, all these different things. And that's what we're here to talk about is the everybody. And I want to say thank you to Councilmember Folch for continuing to have that conversation and fight that fight. Because it can be really easy for us to take for granted the luxuries that we have and these costs because you have trees in your yard, which my gosh, we all want them to have trees. We want everyone to have trees. So Councilmember Folch, I support your commitment to this, and I just want to say thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. And Councilmember Fox.
I'd like to echo those sentiments and especially highlight the fact that anything we can do to keep people in their homes is the best thing we can do for our constituents. And I think that is how we both grow our, we keep talking about housing as a priority. We keep, keep our population growing, but also encourage folks to invest in their homes too, if they're able. So thank you, Councilmember Folch.
And thank you, Councilmember Fox. Any other, Councilmember Folch?
So point of clarification, Mayor, I'm not sure, would I have to make a formal motion for that to go to the Finance Committee of the council for further conversation at some point? Or is it just enough to ask for it to go to the Finance Committee for further discussion?
Dan, I think we can just ask to send it to Finance to look it over, correct? Moving this forward tonight and then for the for the future, relooking into that?
It's certainly doable if if there was a desire for a formal motion, I might defer to council on if that actually works since it's not specifically on the agenda. But if it's just an informal refer, I think that's certainly, certainly acceptable.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Is that clarifying up, Councilmember Folch?
I think what I, what I heard Dan say was that it was enough just to ask for it to be referred to the
Right.
The Finance Committee of the council when it meets sometime in the future.
Right. So would you like to make a motion to accept the resolution tonight for the City of Hastings establishing a diseased tree hardship relief program as we have in our packets?
Sure, yes. I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
And Councilmember Fox, additional discussion? Clerk Mercha, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Councilmember Folch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Lico?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fessender?
Yes. Thank you. That motion prevails. We also have a to authorize a issuance of the parklet license, which we've already done tonight, and a resolution for a home occupancy e-bikes port of Hastings Outfitters 420 East Sixth Street. And tonight, we have John Hensman from Community Development, and he will explain this.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members. Tonight, for your consideration, we have the issuance of a home occupation license for 420 East Sixth Street. I'm going to share my screen, show a little bit more information on the proposal. Proposal here would be at this location, which is at the corner of Sixth and Bailey Street in close proximity to the Bailey Street Trail, which is part of our our internal trail system looking up to the riverfront. You may recall that Port of Hastings operated an e-bike facility underneath the bridge last season. And this season, they're proposing to operate this out of their home and hope that they will be located within the Confluence Building for next season. So a little bit of an unusual request in that it may be short term in nature. As far as the home occupation permits and their consideration within our zoning code, we have two types of home occupation permits, those that are permitted outright and those that require planning commission review with city council approval. Because this proposal uses the garage, which is located in the back of the property, it does require a a public hearing and require consideration and recommendation by the planning commission. So we did hold that public hearing at the May 24th meeting. No one spoke for or against it. Prior to the meeting, we did receive one comment in support of the proposal. The planning commission spent a little time discussing it, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this proposal. So this would be what they would be doing. It would be an e-bike rental facility. The e-bike rental would generally take place online over the phone. Customers would come to the site, receive a bicycle and and take off from there. So really, the only impact you would see in the neighborhood would be a few more cars that would be parked. You might note that on their property, they do have a rather large driveway garage area in which cars could be parked. Cars could also be parked along the city streets as well. So the way that we issue home occupation permits, first year would be a provisional permit for one year, and then a full permit would be considered by the council after one year period. So I can stand for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John at this time, council? Okay, seeing none, then I would accept a motion to adopt a resolution to of the City Council, the City of Hastings, granting a type two home occupancy permit to operate an e-bike rental business at 420 Sixth Street East.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brax?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
And Councilmember Leifeld. Council, any new discussion? Clerk Mercha, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Councilmember Folch?
Yes, found the mute button there.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Lico?
Yes.
Member Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fessender?
Yes. And that motion prevails. Tonight, we also have backyard chickens. We are going to first remove it from the table. And then after that, we will have another discussion. So council, I would accept a motion to remove the table, the planning committee of council's report on keeping of chickens.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to remove from table.
Thank you, Councilmember.
That, Your Honor.
And Councilmember Fox. For Mercha, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Councilmember Folch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Lico?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fessender?
Yes. And this motion prevails, so we'll refer to Planning Commission. With the item now removed from the table, I would accept a motion to refer the keeping of chickens to Planning Commission.
So moved, Your Honor.
Your Honor, clarification?
Yes.
Can we, can we stipulate a timeframe on this? Since we know that the work's been done, we know that planning commission has seen it, we know that city staff has been working on it. Can we discuss a timeframe on this so that we're not, I mean, we're already on whatever. So we've got one more meeting left this month. I know it sound, might sound silly, but I understand the chicken raising process in order for them to have chickens that are laying this winter. I do know that they need to get their chicks purchased and moving. Apparently they can, chickens must be a certain age to lay eggs and such. So I do want to make sure that this isn't something that finds the long way back around to us for a vote. Because I know we've been talking about this for a number of years and we seem to be fully informed. So what is that process?
There is a motion on the table, Your Honor, that needs a second.
We'll have discussion after.
Can you clarify your motion, Councilmember Brax?
My motion is to send the the item to the planning committee of council.
Clarified, council members, that planning committee of council or to the planning commission? The report came from the planning committee of council.
Sorry, let me see.
Going to the planning commission. Right?
That that would be the recommendation of the of the committee would be to refer the ordinance review to the planning commission.
Okay, yes. Okay, let me revise my motion then. I will recommend, I will move that we move this item from the table to the planning commission for further review and discussion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brax. And I'll need a second.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Folch, a second. Any additional discussion at this point? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Here's some points, John, and I will email them to you also so we can help the timeline on this one. So it's going to be questions I'll have when it comes back to us. But I would like the planning commission to listen to them also. First, in the proposed ordinance that we've, that's presented by the planning committee was the Hall of, I'm sorry, the homeowners of the I'm sorry, the Homeowners Association, if applicable. Do we have a list of the homeowners and will they get a opportunity to adjust their homeowners' agreements? I mean, 2019, I pay into one, but we didn't have a meeting due to the pandemic. I just want to make sure that, I don't want to pass an ordinance that they have to react to. At least they have know that might be coming. The second one is, in number three here, we talked about the size of the parcel. Letter C says four chickens are allowed per parcel, an additional four per acre over the first acre. Please have staff confirm what is the size of a parcel that's allowed to have four hens? Is it one acre that is a requirement or is it, this decent clarification on letter C of what is an actual parcel? The next one is, it looks like it has to be fenced in area. Just confirming, there's no setback on that. If you could have, have staff answer that also. And then number seven talks about impounding chickens. If code enforcement can just tell me where are we going to impound them? Those would be questions that we never did get answered if we had to, which I, I get it. We may never have to, but we, I'm trying to role play this out. What if we do? Where does it go? The, the last two points that I have always, as you can see, have been a, a no vote to this is, is the current proposed ordinance in front of us gives no notification to neighbors. We just did a, a public hearing on a parklet that we had a public hearing for. I just think it's fair to all residents. How will they get to know if their neighbors are having chickens? If staff just approves it and then we're gonna get a phone call saying, "How did that happen?" I just, I'm, I'm hung up on that one, but maybe staff has some answers for us on that one. And then the last is, how, how did we ever have this ordinance? Why do we have it? There has to be some history of why this ordinance was in there that residents couldn't have backyard chickens. So, why now? Why, why are we flipping it back? I just wanted to know what the history is of why we ever had the ordinance to start with. Otherwise, it shouldn't really be a discussion if it's a, if everybody else had it. Somehow, it came into our ordinance packet somewhere along the line. I'm just curious about the history. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Any additional, Councilmember Leifeld?
So, John, so previously, the information we got came from the Planning Committee. Has the Planning Commission seen this before or not?
Councilmember, there's quite a history of, of meetings pertaining to chickens here. So, both entities have seen it in some iteration, albeit it's not been since 2019. So, it's been two years since anyone has reviewed this. The procedure moving forward today unfortunately is going to take a little longer. If the Council moves to direct staff to, to review this ordinance, we would go back to the Planning Commission. The earliest opportunity we could go to them for a public hearing would be June 28th. They would review an ordinance at that point, which as, as you've mentioned, we've, we've had a draft ordinance in place. We would do some review of that for that meeting. A recommendation by the Planning Commission would place that on the Council for first reading on July 6th. They would order another public hearing at that point, and that public hearing would take place on July 19th. At that, at that time, public hearing before Council, potential adoption of ordinance, and then the publication of it later on that week. So, long story short, the earliest possible date in which chickens may be allowed within the city would be late in July. So, I just wanted to make Council aware of that. Because of this.
Would that date then, John, so at the public?
Well, go ahead, Councilmember.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was just stating that.
Just to clarify then.
You first.
Thank you. Just to clarify then, the date that you gave me, we could potentially be looking at July 19th, a public hearing. Are we then able to vote on it that night? Right? So, it comes, public hearing and then council vote. So, reasonably speaking, we could be looking at a yes or no to chickens on July 19th.
That, that is correct, and that, that's assuming that the, the Planning Commission forwards a recommendation at their 28th meeting. The last time we took it before the Planning Commission, albeit the membership has changed slightly, there was a split vote on that. I think it was a 3-2 vote to support chickens at that time. So, it would really be depended on a, a recommendation, one way or the other, from the Planning Commission on it. So, a, as we pointed out earlier, we, we did have an ordinance prepared for Council consideration in 2019. It, it failed for lack of a majority at that time, so we essentially have to start over on the process. The, the failure of the Council to adopt the ordinance with a, a majority of vote rendered that ordinance provision dead. So, we, we have to start over again. So, that, that's what leads to the, to the, the timeframe on this.
And then can I ask a clarifying question? John, I don't know if this will be you or if this might be City Attorney Corey Land over there. So, my understanding is that the homeowners' association, whatever their laws and rules are, would clearly supersede or go over whatever the city allows.
That's my understanding. It is that homeowners' association may provide further restrictions beyond city code.
Okay. So, that being said, I'm just wondering to Councilmember Vaughn's concern on number one is, is that, is that a concern? It doesn't seem like a reasonable concern that we're not, that we want to give homeowners' associations an option here? Does that seem like a valid concern?
Well, I don't know if I'll go into the reasonliness of a council member, but you know, it, it's, we have ordinances that, in provisions that we modify from time to time that have effect on homes and homeowners' associations. And so, we, we haven't done a direct notification before for, for ordinance amendments to homeowners' associations. Frankly, I don't have a list of, of a comprehensive list of all homeowners' associations within the city. The, the, what I would suggest doing is, when we move forward on this, to publicize this the best that we can so that all citizens of the city are aware of the potential of this and they can, they could prepare their comments for or against it.
Thank you, John. And then I have one final comment, then I'll let someone else speak. I do want to speak to the notification of neighbors. At this time, we don't have to notify neighbors when we're getting a dog. I know that dogs, my dog, I clean up after him nightly. However, I know, having lived in other places, not everyone does that. I know that backyards can get rather obnoxious and smell and very loud and sound, quite a bit louder than four hens. So, I do want to state for the record for myself, personally, I don't feel that that's necessary, that neighbors are notified of this. Just as we do with your other backyard pets. You know, not all dogs are house dogs. Lots of dogs are yard dogs. So, I just want to state that. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, John, for the clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Any other questions, Council? There is a motion and a second on the floor. Clerk Merchan, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Fulch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fessender?
Yes. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under administration, we have state bonding requests, and for this item, we will have an introduction by our city administrator, Dan Matija.
Thank you. Although, introduce it, and, and obviously, there was one memo in the packet. There are three separate resolutions that are proposed, and if Council's still inclined, can adapt any, any or no combination of those. So, one, three, something in between, none of them. Anyways, the governor's request for state bonding proposals is upon us very quickly. The deadline for application is next Friday. So, tonight is really Council's only opportunity to have discussion around this. They have a number of priorities for what they're looking for. We can certainly deviate from those, but less likely to get funded in what's already going to be competitive and tight as it is. A, a couple that I want to highlight are preservation of existing infrastructure, repairing the existing facilities rather than starting new projects, requiring a local match of at least 50% preference to have the project come out of some sort of community engagement planning process. Does require a local resolution of support from the governing body. That's why there's three resolutions in the packet. Also, a priority for integrating climate preparedness and/or clean energy. Highlight those because aspects of those show up in the, the three proposals that we've got here. The other piece I, I want to point out besides the, the state's priorities are at the, the staff level. Our management team looked at the existing CIP/CEP and tried to look at actual projects that are coming up in the next year or two. We didn't want to treat this as a, for lack of a better term, a wish list and just grabbing projects, chasing the funding. Those, those might be decent projects. We really wanted to try to tackle things that we recognize are coming and could, could certainly be significant difficulties in our, our budget and ability to finance them. The first is refrigeration at the ice arena. The current system uses R22 as a refrigerant, which is no longer manufactured. So, keeping it going and, and repairs are based on the existing inventory out there available. And whatever we have or may be able to purchase, and obviously, costs are going up. We know that sometimes sooner or later, and it's, the reckoning is coming, we will need to replace that. We did do a study a couple of years ago looking at options in terms of cost effectiveness, but also looked at the energy benefits to making that change and would look at doing an ammonia-based system. The dollar figure in the memo and the resolution is one and a half million dollars. As soon as I pushed send for putting it in the packet, got an updated number from the architect engineers for, for this, figure it's 1.8 million. So, if Council's inclined to pass this resolution, would, would appreciate increasing that dollar amount. The other piece that I want to note mentioned that we looked at existing projects and in the CIP. We do, and tried to, really tried to match them up with the state's criteria, the state's priorities. We have another project coming up, $400,000 to replace the roof on the west rink. And initially, we deliberately kept that out. Felt that it didn't, it, it was more of an add-on and maybe a distraction to the overall project. Councilmember Fulch brought up some stuff over the weekend and talked with Chris a, a couple of times this morning. Although, the roof replacement is in the CIP for $400,000. We, when we did the study, they actually looked at, although they did not include a dollar cost, they looked at the feasibility of adding solar panels to that rooftop. So, with that addition, I think that it hits enough of these checkboxes on priorities that Council could, could do instead of 1.8 million request for refrigeration, could increase it another 400,000 for the roof and estimate 150,000 for solar panels. That's based on 10 bucks a square foot and round numbers. So, at 2.35 million, I think, could be an updated number. Obviously, the language to, to add the, the roof and solar panels would need to be put in the resolution if, if so inclined. Not the way we like to bring projects to you. We'd rather have it been in the packet last Thursday, but there, there were certainly some opportunity to add to that proposal if, if Council wishes. The second request is, or proposal is for trail improvements. We have about 30 miles of trails through town. Couple of years ago, we did a engineering study which looked at a mix of fixes, you know, from some simple crack sealing or seal coating to actual reconstruction of trails based on their conditions. And the recommendation came back at literally in excess of a million dollars a year for five years. So, over $5 million to rehab our trails to the condition we'd like them to be. They're certainly used, certainly saw this yet last year, but also in the past, certainly used by our residents. They're a feature that we are using our tourism marketing. Some recent efforts in the past couple of years, working with the county to have them connect in with the Mississippi River Trail, Point Douglas Trail. So, potentially a, a project there. I do want to point out that although there's a certain, there is a definite need there, it, it's probably a lower priority than the refrigerant. A, a matter of, if, if refrigerants that replaced in the next couple of years, we won't be able to use the ice rinks, or at least you have to close one of them, probably both of them. The trails, we, we can certainly do things with closing a section or slowly phasing and chipping away a couple hundred thousand dollars a year the way we have the last couple of years and still maintain the trail. So, it's not quite the same operational urgency as the, the refrigerant. But certainly proposal there. And the reason I point that out is, is because of the local match. You know, if this gets funded, are we ready to come up with two and a half million dollars? It's certainly more than we've been budgeting the last couple of years. The third project is a, very much a wild ballpark estimate for cost, pegged it at one and a half million dollars. But it's related to fuel station and also storage. The, for a number of years, we've had a agreement that we can utilize the county's maintenance facility on 47 for for getting fuel for our vehicles, city vehicles and equipment. We, obviously, we pay for it and it's all metered, but the county is in process of closing that facility for something that's more centrally located in the county. It's good for them. But for any vehicle that might need to go down there 20-plus minutes one way, you're talking about an hour trip, round trip for every police car, fire truck, plow truck, parts pickup truck, i- any vehicle that we're needing to, to fuel up or wanting to maintain having the, the tank topped off, just a tremendous inefficiency. So, interested in looking at an option for fuel here in town. Unfortunately, some of those vehicles, plow trucks, fire engines are real big and they don't swing through a, a quick trip for M&amp;H or Holiday real convenient. So, potentially looking at option to acquire the county's facility from them, which they, they indicated has not been appraised, but they threw out it could easily be a million dollars. And that's the basis for our cost estimate. The other would be looking at, do we have room behind public works that building our own facility, which, which might be more cost effective? So, putting in that fuel station with it, we would certainly want to add electric charging stations, recognizing that some of our fleet will be converting over to electric vehicles. The other piece is a little bit of an add-on. It's not specific to the, the inner, the, the fuel aspect, but something in the way of some storage for maintenance of vehicles, but also just additional cold storage. We've got a couple of buildings, the old UBC buildings that are bursting at the seams and not intended to be storage. We'd really like to see those redeveloped and economically viable as a business. But for that to happen would displace a, a variety of equipment that we, we've had for safekeeping indoors and needing to find a home. If we purchase the county's facility, the storage is easy, although there might need to be repairs to the buildings. If we looked at building on the public worksite or maybe other actions, it might include building a new storage garage, service garage to go with the, the, the fuel pumps and electric stations. But that's the third project that's proposed. We did. But that's the third project that's proposed. We did look at a few others, but felt that these were the ones that best fit our upcoming projects the next couple of years, but also hit a number of the priorities from the state. With that, I can certainly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Folch?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, I, I, of the three proposals, I think the one that's the most viable is your first proposal about the ice rink. You know, oftentimes, when you look at these kinds of initiatives, they're, they're better suited when it's more of a, of a regional asset, you know? And I can see where the, where the ice arena, it, it hits several of these where it's preserving existing infrastructure. The reason it needs the big upgrade is an environmental issue with the change of the refrigerant. And and I think that that's a great idea about putting solar on the roof and then fixing the roof and packaging it all together. And because then it also helps with that 50% match, if you put it all, you know, together in one, we were going to have to pay for it anyhow. And so, and I can't remember if it was 2023, you were thinking about implementing the refrigeration. I think that's when it was, but who knows if we'll get a bonding, you know, a bonding bill this upcoming year or not. But at, at least I think that it's a, that that would be a wonderful, a wonderful initiative. With the, the second one was the park with the trails. You know, I just don't ever recall seeing a bonding bill that was just for with, for trails within a municipality. So I'm not aware that any of our trail system has a designation of like an area asset or definitely not a state asset. I know that we just upgraded a segment of our trails and it's being turned over to the county. So that's no longer within our trail system. So maybe that would be the only one that's more of a regional trail. So I just wonder how viable that would be as an option. I mean, like, would even Jergens or Senator Bigum even carry, you know, a bill that was only, you know, specific to trails that were just city trails? It's typically more of a responsibility of, of a, you know, of the city to maintain its own city trails. And so I'm not sure how viable that is or not. Mark works for, or Councilmember Vaughn works for Parks Department, maybe has some insights on that. And then the last, the night, the last item with the fuel station, I think that that might warrant consideration if you also got, you know, like the county saying that they could still service some of their, you know, like fuel their vehicles there, or just that you had more partnership. Again, I just kind of wonder about that because it's not an existing facility that the city owns. We would have to be purchasing it from the county and then it, so I'm not sure if that can, that would be considered, you know, existing infrastructure that the city owns. It seems like it has a lot of caveats to it. But anyhow, those were my comments about the three. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Folch. Any other comments, counsel? Dan?
Just real quick, I, I think your comments are, are spot on, council member. I, I agree with all of them. I, on the trail system, it is part of the, I believe, the Mississippi Regional Trail, which is a national designation. So although 30 miles might not be directly in it, we've got connections to a very, very regional trail that other municipalities might not. Also, I know past bonding bills doesn't mean precedent for future, but I've seen them fund lift stations and things that very much are local and not regional. So it, it, it may still be a possibility. The, the fuel station, I should have noted, the other piece that, that's a potential partner in this is it, it would be accessible for the state mend that's vehicles to go here instead of having to drive to another fuel station out of town. So but, but very much appreciate and your, your, your comments are right in line with my thoughts on, on the, sort of the ranking and likelihood of the different projects. Thank you.
An additional comment, council member Folch, or no?
Yes, thanks for being so as iffy with me, right? Yeah. I just wanted to add one last thing, just so folks were aware of it since about, talking about trails, because we had this conversation within the strategic planning initiative. And that was the, the Red Wing Hastings Trail System that has been, you know, like planned forever. I think it started in 2007 and then last time it was touched by staff in all of our respective jurisdictions was in 2017 into early 2018. And so something I just wanted to say about that is that probably most folks aren't aware of is that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has created these new designations of environmental justice. And the tribal, the Creole and tribal community and then into Red Wing has been all now designated as an environmental justice area. And so like they're all elevate, it's, it like elevates them. They get extra scoring criteria for grant initiatives and such. And so I just bring that up because if we were to ask for, just as a, for instance, you know, if we were to revisit that and see if there's more interest, and I could go on about that a little bit further if you wanted me to, but I know I'm getting into the weeds. But it would actually have a higher priority at this point because of that environmental justice of being like this huge area which, which, which would be falling within it. I think that would be really a prime, a prime thing that we could maybe move forward. And I know that would be a heavy lift and you're not ready for it now to ask for it in the next two weeks. But I think the time is right and we have the right governor who would, they may be looking for those kinds of initiatives. So anyhow, those were my last two cents. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Folch. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I just want to thank Dan for putting this memo together fairly quickly. And I think biggest thing it shows me, I support it all, but it raises some large awareness here that we are short funding of some major projects. When I hear 5 million short of our trails, we built too many trails or we didn't plan to replace pixels trails. We, we need a solution on this one. I think this is the right thing to do to go ask for it, but I'd be cautious about just loading it all on there because we still got to do the projects. We still got to come up with 50% of it. So I get the solar part, I get the roof part, it's all in need. So let's do it the right way. The first time, I think energy is the way to do it, to ask for it. But it may be a simple, maybe we're not buying those solar panels, maybe we're leasing that roof once it's done. So someone else has to pay for it. I still think it's okay to ask. I just don't want, I don't want this all of a sudden to go on our parking lot because, oh, we all approved it going to the apply for bonding bill that, oh, this is a high priority. It is a priority, but it's also a priority that we, we as council got to start figuring this stuff out. So we're not scrambling, asking for everybody to help fund our infrastructure that we have. So I support it. I, I wish us best of luck. I just want to make sure that we understand we got a lot of expenses ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Anyone else? Okay, then I would accept a motion to adapt one or more of the proposed resolutions supporting application for state bonding. One would be arena refrigeration system. Two is the trail system maintenance, and three is the fuel station project. Dan, did you have a comment?
Just requested clarification if the, if there's a motion and vote in favor of the arena project. Is it as originally written or is it adding the roof and, and solar with it? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Folch?
Your Honor, I would make a motion to be in support of the application for state bonding for the Hastings Civic Center improvements, adding the roof for sure, because that needs to get done. And the testimony from the, the Hockey Association, it sounds like it's leaking pretty badly in, in opportune times. And so and I think the idea of the, the solar, I think you, it's always great to get those extra points. And so I would be in favor of also adding the, the solar panels to the roof.
So just that resolution or do you want to go on the?
That's the one I'll make a recommendation for. I, I, I'm not sure how viable the other two are. You know, at this point, I don't think that the, as I had mentioned, I don't think that the city trail system would be prime for being carried for, for legislation, but I didn't talk to either one of our representatives to see if they would even carry such a bill.
Okay. Councilmember Vaughn?
Your Honor, Councilmember Folch, I would ask that we apply for all three, even if it's not viable. Why not put it on our radar to, it might, we just talked about tourism today. Tourism might help drive, bring that forward and it might get the attention of some people. So I, I make, I would support your view. So said, let's apply for all three of these in the bonding. Why not? It's just, it's an ask.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion then to approve all three and then with the modification to the civic center with the roof and the, the solar. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Fox?
I second that in support of Councilmember Vaughn's point. I think it's, we go and ask for it and we answer the funding question with the response from the governor.
Okay. And any additional comments, counsel?
Mayor, did you get a second for that motion?
Yes, Councilmember Fox.
Okay, just wanted to help.
Any additional discussion? Okay. Clerk Merchall, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Folch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender?
Yes. And that motion prevails and let's cross our fingers. Counsel, any announcements you'd like to make? Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me get up my little piece here so I don't forget what it is I'm going, going to announce. So this Saturday, kind of something super exciting in our house anyway. Hastings has a group that has organized, June is our pride month, for those of you that don't know. And there is a pride parade organized for this Saturday, June 12th. It'll start at 5:00 PM at roadside park. It is family friendly. All are welcome to join in the family friendly pride parade. There will be, the parade will go down to the pavilion downtown. There will be speeches, some, there'll be popsicles, temporary tattoos, music by the board. For those of you who are familiar with the group around town, the board, they'll be playing live at 6:30 down at the pavilion. So I'd just like to invite families to come on out and show your support for the LGBTQ+ community that we have in Hastings. And then, of course, all of our wonderful allies. So hopefully, we'll see you all down there on Saturday. Thanks, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. And I think this is a great addition for our community. I have a couple announcements. First, I'd like to congratulate the 151st graduating class of Hastings High School, which Councilmember Vaughn has two members of his family that walked and we want to wish your girls the best. And the Hastings Family Aquatic Center opened for summer yesterday. Punch cards and season passes are available. Register online for swimming lessons. Safety camp is for youth entering third to fifth grade and will explore a variety of topics, including player safety, bike safety, personal safety, and much more. Participants will have a fun day of games, activities, and learning sessions. Cost is $20 and includes snacks, lunch, and a T-shirt. Register online through June 9th. The Dakota County Sheriff Office and Hastings Police Department, in coordination with the Hastings United Way Food for Kids Program, are sounding the siren to help fight student hunger in Hastings through June 6th. Free, please bring non-perishable food to donation of the lobbies of Dakota County Sheriff Office, the Hastings Police Department, and Hastings City Hall. Levy Park Summer Program begins at 5:30 tomorrow, Tuesday, June 8th. Kickoff summer with the Aztec dance performances, fire shows, and live music by the Metro Gnomes. Enjoy food trucks, inflatables, and activities. All ages welcome to this free event. The summer programs continue. Thursday, June 10th starts Music in the Park with Ladies of the 80s, supported by the Ruth and George Dauphine Charitable Foundation. Friday, June 11th is Movie in the Park is Land Before Time, sponsored by Ardent Mills. Please bring a non-perishable food item for Hastings Food Service. Wednesday, June 16th is Storytime in the Park, and the theme is adventure in partnership with Pleasant Hill Library. Thursday, June 17th is Music in the Park with Function Junction, supported by Ruth and George Dauphine Charitable Foundation. Meetings coming forward are Tuesday, the Parks and Rec Commission has been canceled. Thursday, June 10th is Hedra at 6:00 PM. Monday, June 14th is the Planning Commission at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, June 15th Heritage Preservation Commission at 7:00 PM. Thursday, June 17th is Public Safety Advisory Commission at 6:30 PM. And Monday, June 21st at 5:00 PM, City Council does have a budget workshop. And 7:00 PM is our City Council meeting, regular meeting. Lots of things going on within our community. Any additional comments, counsel? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Your Honor.
Councilmember Folch?
I have a second.
On second, no discussion. And Clerk Merchall, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Folch?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender?
Yes. Motion prevails. Staff and counsel, thank you and have a good rest of your night.
See you tomorrow night at the park.
Yes, you will.